May, may, may. I call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for being here. Would you please join me in the pleasure?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as those of you who are familiar with our meetings know, we follow that with a moment of silence, so be thinking of everyone who have had a rough day today. Thank you. Thank you so much, board members. You have an agenda. For a couple of days.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries, we have an agenda. First item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is for the town manager's recommended budget for fiscal 2022, 2023. Would you like to make an introduction?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just bring us into public here.
Yes, please, yes, please.
There will be a public hearing conducted this evening by the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners. The following rules will apply to this particular hearing as they do to all. A public notice was up this hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards and website that meet or exceed statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has also been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will be recording all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing, which will also be submitted in full to the town clerk. If speaking tonight, please limit your comments to matters which are relevant to the particular issue. If speaking on behalf of yourself, there would be a time load of three minutes. A five-minute exception is going to be made if there's a spokesperson for a group. Of course, you'll come up to the microphone. Note debates and identify yourself when coming forward by giving your name and address. The public hearing will now come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following: Town manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. And do not have anyone sign up. So a call from the floor, does anybody want to speak? All right, over to you guys.
Testament to what a beautiful budget it is. I believe there have been some other discussions about some minor possible improvements. I think that, first off, as you said, congratulations are in order. It's a wonderful budget. One of the better ones I've seen. Y'all did a great job. I've looked at some of the other municipalities and I'm concerned about retention from a staff level. I would like to propose that we raise the COLA by 1.5 to make it seven and a half percent rather than six percent. So I'll bring that up for discussion. I get where you're coming with that. It is a tough year to figure out what the cost of living is going to do. It's kind of scary times. Every time I thought I knew what was going to happen, the next month, a different thing happened. Having run my own businesses for many years, I'm definitely follow your logic that it usually costs less to retain good people than it does to train new ones. Even if you can get the new person for less, that training costs eat you up pretty quick. We also know that we're in a tight labor market just in general, so, you know, probably 100 articles in the last six months about how mobile people can be when it comes to looking for options out there. There's a lot more jobs than our people, so retention is probably a very real concern.
May I ask a quick question? I like the idea of having a very competitive COLA. It kind of shows value to our residents that we really invest in that staff. I want to keep people here, but I just want to ask, has that already been figured into, can we afford it, to do it?
The numbers have been run and it is something that can be done within this proposed tax rate.
You know, that's a lot of money. No tax, I'd create something that can do with that. We're very fortunate to be in that situation, too. I think I read the other day that Hyde County was looking at increasing theirs by 10 cents.
Wow.
From, it was 79 to 89. And yet, you know, I hadn't really realized that Hyde County is smaller than Kill double Hills. Huge area, but less people on a smaller budget. So, yeah, whole different ballgame there. Two more board members to weigh in on a COLA, which, you know, we could say is generous or we could say is strategically a smart move.
Oh, I certainly support it. I think that that's, you know, you just want to be competitive with the other towns. Make sure we retain our staff and, you know, if it can be worked out in such a way.
They ran it.
They ran it. I fully support that. Yeah, very proud of our staff.
Yeah, you know, I'm for it. I've pushed it up. Yeah, I brought it the last time, pushed it up a little more. Terry pushed up a little more. It's perfect. I like it.
We're in a worse situation where I had not such a supportive board that is looking out for staff, so I think there's consensus there. Were there any other things that you thought of since the last? We've gone over this a number of times, but.
That was it for me there.
Overall, I think we have covered most of the territory. I think we have a great working relationship with our town manager and the finance staff that we have seen problems solved throughout the year. As things don't go as planned, there's ways to move things around and make sure that it works out right. Place a lot of faith in that and high-level things that we want to work on, beautification on our oceanfront, beach accesses, bypass, having a plan to slowly work towards a better looking carbon footprint are all things that we can take advantage of as opportunities come up and as we learn more. Mostly I'm just running my mouth to give you a little more time if there's anything else I want to say. Now, in case it wasn't clear, we do not have to take action tonight, though we could. We can, so I will leave that to you guys as well.
You guys are good with doing it. I'll be glad to make a motion. And I would move that we approve item 1A, Town Manager's Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 22 and 23 with the increased COLA as presented.
I'll second that.
Cover everything? Or do you need the budget?
In that paragraph?
If you could do those two bullets and.
To include the budget ordinance, consolidated fee schedule for fiscal year 22 and 23, and the Kill double Hills Shore Protection Project Capital Reserve Ordinance Amendment, Beach Nourishment 1813 as amended.
And just for, just as a reminder for it to be in the minutes, at the budget work session, the board by consensus increased the sidewalk.
Sidewalk, yep.
Reserve to 300,000. That's in the.
I figured that was in there.
Well, it's not in the recommended budget, but it's in there because you did it by consensus.
And to include the increase in the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Does that cover everything you need?
Yes, sir. It's got everything I need.
You good with that, Mr. Town Attorney?
Sure am, Commissioner.
Right, so we've got a commission, we've got a kitchen sink motion and I'll second. Second down on this end. One chance for further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? We have a budget.
Thank you very much, and on behalf of the employees, thank you so much for the increase in the COLA, and we look forward to carrying out your budget.
I hope everything settles down when it comes to inflation. That will help us all out in a lot of ways. Things out of our control, yeah. So let's see here. At this point, we're moving on to not the public hearing part, but the public comment part. This is something we do twice every meeting, but beginning of the meeting and the end. If anybody'd like to speak on any subject that you like, similar rules apply, three minutes for individuals and five minutes for groups. Just let us know who you are and where you live. No pushing and shoving on your way to the podium. Not if anybody did. Okay, all right. We're heading for the other door. Thank you all for the good work.
Thank you, thank you.
Seeing that no one has stepped up to the public comment period, we will close public comment. I guess no need to respond to it. So we're on to ongoing business. You'll recall we had an offer to purchase some time ago, a small piece of land that was donated to the town years and years ago. It's an unbuildable part of a small bit of lot on the oceanfront across from, I guess the actual address is 3315 North Virginia Dairy Trail. Is that right?
That's correct. 3315.
So this was part of the upset bid process in which the person offering to buy it started the process and we waited a certain amount of time for somebody else to outbid them by a certain amount, and no bid scheme in them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if I understand the memos correctly, the town attorney will be putting together purchase agreement and will execute it in a way that it doesn't cost us anything, we just get some money for that little piece of property.
And that was actually, the agreement was actually attached right behind there?
Yep.
And it's been agreed to by the board? So we already have their written signature in hand? So we're just waiting on approval from you guys if that's the direction you want to go?
So a motion is in order to have that be executed. Or I guess I just made that motion. I made a motion. We execute that in eight seconds. And we have a second. Any further discussion on the purchase, the sale of this property? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Congratulations to Saint Life LLC.
We'll notify them tomorrow.
We're a new slice of heaven. All right, so that's the first item in ongoing business. The second, as you all recall, is appointments, which we had looked at some time ago. In our infinite wisdom, we gave ourselves a little more time and advertised a little bit more to see who else was out there. I understand some of you have had some conversations with some of these applicants. Is that right? Tell us what you heard.
No, I saw Becky Reholtz last week and just confirmed with her, her interest in serving on the planning board. She's very excited about it, wants to do it, and I'd like to make a motion to nominate Becky Reholtz for the election.
We have a motion for Becky in two seconds, which means it's just you and me, man. Can we make this happen? Aye. Motion on the floor, any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Congratulations to Becky. We'll let her know. The other one we're trying to fill is Community Appearance Commission.
Mayor, I'd like to address that. The CAC, we're not meeting in June, nor are we meeting in the summer months. We've kind of had a little bit of a dry spell with just not a lot of activity, canceled a few meetings. I know we've held off on this already once, but I'd like to, I'd hate to appoint somebody to a committee and not meet for three months. And I have a lot happening, maybe just kind of wait a couple more months if we get a few more applicants, and then once we, you know, clear path going forward, a meeting scheduled, then on the spot.
Something to be excited about, meeting.
Yeah, I decided I wouldn't want to be appointed to a committee that didn't meet for a long, long time.
That's a very good consideration. I had not thought of that. Yep. I guess by consensus, we will hold off. Leave it open a little bit. All right, sounds good.
Let the applicants in.
So, wow, we've really moved through this agenda. We are down to committee reports already. You had a meeting since the last time? No?
We have, no, we have not had a meeting since last time. They kind of scaled back, basically, a lot in the summer. There is a budget meeting in a week, but I'm missing that over here.
The only thing, the government education access came at the 25th, improved the budget. That's about all that really took place.
Streets Committee hasn't been out, although I guess we should be, probably, usually fall.
This is the year we do another evaluation, is that right? I can't remember what year it is.
I believe the evaluation is, we selected some people from the Street Public Health Committee to do the evaluation with staff, and I'm not sure exactly when they're going to do it. I'm assuming that will be in the fall, and then we'll get together October, November, go over the evaluation sheet. But we do have our upcoming project already determined, which is the Seminole 158 Drainage, and then based on some discussion before, we're going to put an alternate bid to put a sidewalk on Fifth Street by the BB&amp;T that we requested through the conversation about Lala and try to get that in this project, because it's going all the way to West Durham Street, so it's right in the same path. So that's the upcoming project, and then we have the plan year project, too, that we've applied for all the grants for, which is Wrightsville, Goddard Drainage, big drainage project. That's a, that's a big one, and so we're waiting to hear back on the grant funding. So we'll do the evaluation this year, and then we'll review the evaluation and start looking at, it will be the plan, plan year.
Normally, we would be looking for this to identify next year's project, but since Third Street got so big, it pushed back the projects one year or so. It's not as big of a rush as it normally is to get the evaluation done, but we've.
Had to get the money booked up for a year.
It's not effective to do the evaluation in the summer.
New, or too far in advance. You want to do it when you're ready to make the decision, yeah.
Yeah, and depending on how the grant goes and what the board's funding for the Wrightsville project is, that will be a big conversation that we'll have. But next year's project's already decided because Third Street was expanded so much, we split Third Street, so.
It's a long night.
Third Street's almost there.
If you haven't driven down it, please do.
Looks very good.
Public Services Crew has done a great job coordinating that project. It is.
It's almost every.
It's been.
Been a doozy. I'm impressed that there haven't been anybody calling me about it, you know, because I know it's very inconvenient for a whole lot of people in the closed streets.
I think it's overwhelming that they don't even know what to do to call, you know.
It's like, I can't stop this. This is definitely happening right now.
It changes every day.
Almost all the sidewalks went in this weekend.
Oh, wow.
And when you drive down it. The calls you're going to get are, oh, you do that on my street.
That'll be the next thing.
Because it is very impressive to see.
It is. I can't wait to get over there. It's been a couple of weeks since I've been up there.
Well, that might be why the calls aren't coming, you know, because they know something.
They knew something good's coming for them, right?
It's just clean, it's just clean up the whole look.
Way it up, and then the water factory right now, so. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of good in a, I don't know, occupancy, what's the number of households that drain on the Third Street? It's a lot.
It's a lot because of the.
Don't do that math.
Yeah, it's probably one of the top two or three east-west streets in the town.
It's a large truck.
Yes, and the bigger ones, yep. Yeah, it's exciting on that one. Any other things for Commissioners' agendas?
I'd like to say one quick thing to the Commissioners' agenda. I had sad learned last week that Mike and Sue Owen had moved away from town. I'd just like to take a second to acknowledge all that Mike and Sue both have done for our town. They did a tremendous career service to Kill double Hills. I want to share one funny story about Mike that I really like. I've known him for a long time. I did business with him at Bulgari long before he got involved in government, but Mike and Sue, when they walk around town, they used to take a lot of walks, go on campus, all neighborhoods, and they'd pick up trash. It's the kind of people they were. And sometimes when they had a real healthy collection, they'd take pictures and share it on Facebook. And one day, Mike found a few tall boy cans of Budweiser Chaladas someone had left on the ground, and his caption was, "I don't know what's worse, that they littered or that they were drinking Chaladas." I was like, that's the funniest person I think I've ever met. Kudos to Mike, I'm sure going to miss it.
I think I posted on this, one of their posts about, sort of the last couple of days they were down, and I said, you know, I thank Mike for being the first person to say, "You should get on a committee. You should, you should do something with the town." So if it wasn't for him saying, "Hey, don't you want to apply for a committee?", you know, I probably wouldn't be sitting here now. So, given that for getting the ball rolling. I really enjoyed my time on the planning board, and he had too, and, yeah, got me excited about it, but he was right. I really did enjoy that work.
I always enjoyed his introduction. He would come up to you and he'd say, "Sue's here."
He's very supportive of Ivy and I when we ran.
That's right. Happy days. I told him, "I hope they come, come visit often. It's a really good place to visit as well." Probably the opposite. At least the fall. It's like summer will go out of credits. So on Mayor's agenda, I just have one item. We've been talking about this sort of offline, and I'm ready to bring it online. As everyone knows, it needs no introduction, housing, big issue, the biggest issue. I think in the county, if you asked anybody, what's the number one issue? It's can't hire people because there's nowhere for them to live. We're trying to run a hospital or whatever, but can't even find any place for these people. Great people that we've hired, there's no place for them to live. So it's the biggest challenge, and then if you've been following the news, you probably know that the state also realized that and pushed any money our way a long time for housing, and after more than 10 years, did so to the tune of $35 million, which is not a small sum of money. And the county has been working hard to find partners to work with and identify properties, and as the spotlight has swung around, they're some interested in pursuing things in Kill double Hills, particularly what's possible at the Bound Track and other properties that we have in the town. So I know that there is a lot of history there. I know that there's a lot of opportunity there. But before we went down the path of really getting into the details of what the scope or design or size, scale, what at all we did, I just wanted to ask the members of this board if we, as a board, are interested in looking at what the possibilities are for Bound Track when it comes to housing. And if, if we are interested, this motion would direct staff to begin public discussions, both with stakeholders, with the county, but, you know, also set up public meetings so we could get citizen input, feedback, and as well as investigate what the technical details of what we might need to do to figure out what's possible. There's lots of concerns. There's nothing said in stone. This is just the early days of this, but I wanted to take everybody's temperature on that, see if we're going to move forward at that level, and then we can, you know, bring in a lot more stakeholders' input and discuss it in earnest. So that's my motion. If there's discussion, lots of discussion, but otherwise, I just kind of wanted to see what you thought about that.
I'm all for, housing is a big issue, you're right, and I'm all for staff investigating what possibilities might exist with the town. And let me, let me say this first. Kill double Hills has always stepped up to the plate and done what it could do for housing, and we've been there and we've done it, but that doesn't mean you can't do more. So as far as from an investigative standpoint of getting staff to look at what can be done in not only the Bound Track, but in other areas of the town, I'm all for that, and I'd second the motion.
This is where we're asked, if there's further discussion, I don't know. I'll break along. Yeah, I'll chime in. I am somewhat hesitant, somewhat reluctant to develop the Bound Track. I, I do have a real appreciation for how, over the years, the town has used this space for community government resources. But I do feel like we owe this process its full due, and I'm okay with advising staff to look at what the options are. Definitely fill in the public and get input from all our stakeholders. I think that's an important part to all of this. But again, I'd like to share, I really thought our, through the history of the town, we've done a fine job utilizing the Bound Track and all the resources on it for public good.
Yeah, I've done a lot of research into it recently, just because I knew the outlines, but not the meat of it, and really fascinating, all of the, all the history that was behind it, and St. Clair's father and the Bound Center and all the, all the parts that got us to this point, you know, all those different decisions in the past about the schools and the parks that wreck and, you know, commerce, this campus that we sit on. It's a great legacy, and really, a lot of what makes KDH KDH is because of that one moment in time back in the 80s. Other thoughts?
I certainly am interested to see, I was on the original Bomb Track, the last Bomb Track Committee that, that put the disc off on the, on the, on the track over there. And yes, I think, you know, we definitely need to look into what could potentially be done there. You know, you know, that cannot hurt to continue with that process. They've identified this property as one that they're interested in, the county. So that being said, I think, you know, we need to be sure to make the right, if we were to, you know, if the staff recommends and whatnot, to make the right deal that would, that would really benefit, you know, this town and the people of this town. So whatever it may be.
Yeah, I think we wrote that down, too.
Yeah, whatever it may be in the end, you know, it also has to make sense for us, you know? I've talked to some people, you know, but we're looking to, you know, you know, I mean, the details will be what's important here. So, you know, it doesn't hurt to discuss it for sure, but when it comes down to it, you know, we have to be very, very, we have to put a lot of effort into making sure we get what we want as well.
Correct, yeah, that was, it's, I like to talk, you know, phonetically off the top of my head, but I did think about what I wanted to say, and the last sentence was, investigate what might be needed to move this into record while keeping the best interests of the people up to town at the forefront. That has definitely had the front of it, and then, you know, you mentioned the golf, we want to make sure that we keep that resource, even that, you know, whatever the options are there, to make sure that that does not go away.
And it does, that's clearly what you say. It could be at least.
It could be small, it could be large.
Right. What all the options are.
You know, Meredith and I have talked about one time, like, what can we do on our own? What are the pros and cons of this $35 million, and how does that balance out, you know, what the net net is for the people of Kill double Hills? I like what you guys have said, that I think we have always been unified as a board, that we are going to do the work and dig in and figure out what all the options are. We've, we've got a bunch of great things that we got done when it came to dealing with large oceanfront homes with fire suppression with our parks. This is probably one of the biggest challenges facing us for the upcoming little bit of time here, so I'm glad that you guys are not going, "No, no, no, I don't want to do that." So as long as we're moving in that direction, that's, that's all this vote was about, was to bring it out, to, to start moving in that direction and find out what all the moving parts are. So unless you had more comments, and there's no further discussion, I'd say, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Oh, we have, we have a motion, and thank you for that, you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Lots to discuss coming up, looking forward to the conversation. Let's see here. After the Mayor's agenda is the Town Manager's agenda.
Up tonight, thank you.
That's right. And the Town Attorney's agenda?
Another mayor, thank you.
That's good to know. And Consent Agenda, I know.
Yes, sir, we do, sure do. First items and minutes from the May 25th, 2022 meeting, month report from April 2022, several budget amendments, one for the PEG channel support funds, appropriate funds for Seminole Street ending and drive in US 158 drainage project, appropriate funds for insurance claims filed throughout fiscal year, appropriate funds for fleet maintenance inventory, appropriate safety grant funds through the North Carolina League of Municipalities. And the last number F is actually a budget transfer between departments, and this is transferring funds to cover health coverage for an employee that became family coverage. Number four, presentation of retiree's service weapon and badge. Sergeant Lee Twitty will be retiring from the Kill double Hills. will be retiring from the Killable Hills Police Department at the end of this month, and he has made a request to purchase a service sidearm and his badge pursuant to General Statute 2187.2. The statute requires government authorization to award and determine the price of the weapon. However, the statute makes no requirement for the badge. Approval of Consent Agenda will record the board's authorization to allow Sergeant Twitty to purchase a service while, service sidearm for the amount of $1. Number five is required policies pertaining to the ARP CSLFRF funds. We've had several discussions about this, about these monies that we'd be receiving, and this is a list. A through D is a list of various resolutions and policies and so forth that are required with the board's adoption. Approval of Consent Agenda will record the board's approval of the above resolutions, which will adopt and implement the listed policies effective immediately. Number six is pretty exciting. We've also sent you this information. Excellent job from our Public Works Department on this. It is a stream flow rehabilitation assistant program grant. $258,458 from this program has been awarded to the town, and it's going to be used to clear debris in the NC Highway Commission canal between Landing and First Flight subdivision. As a part of the grant, the town is required to allocate $98,769 in matching funds. The Consent Agenda will accept the grant. It'll authorize the manager to execute any contracts, and it will approve any necessary budget amendments to appropriate the town's portion. And again, outstanding job from.
Very good, very good job.
Services Department. And lastly, schedule a public hearing. This would be post zoning amendment, low-density residential zones, special uses, add cluster homes. Schedule the public hearing for July the 11th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. Staff recommends approval of Consent Agenda as presented, and the motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second that motion.
Good motion. And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Consent Agenda, pass unanimously.
Thank you very much. Mayor, we do have a second meeting this month on the, I think it's the 27th, it's a Monday. Would the budget have been adopted as early as next week, I will know if we have any items for that meeting. And if not, I'd like to contact you and get consensus from the board to cancel that meeting unless the board sees otherwise.
If you like it, we'll get all the work done. That'd be fine. Thank you. If something comes up, though, happy to meet, of course.
Yes, and I'll know that early next week.
All right, this is the point in the meeting where everyone can fight each other again to go to the podium. More public comment, more pitchforks, and torches. Seeing no one going to public comment, we'll close public comment. No need for response to public comment. And the other pushing and shoving on who gets to make the last motion?
I just want to say one thing before I do. I'll be glad to make the motion.
All right.
I appreciate how you brought that item forward about the housing issue. That was a fine job, and thank you very much. I move with you.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned?